There she is.
I think that's the right one.
You have to find Helen.
I'm efforting that.
Okay.
Ah, there she is. Am I missing anyone?
Helen still isn't in the group. Is she, is it joining? Is it just taking a while?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We promoted her a few moments ago.
Okay.
Why don't we get started as Helen, as Helen joins us?
There she is.
Great. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our June Board of Ed meeting. Could I get a motion to return back to public session?
Second.
Just a second. Could we stand for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. Let me start out by just laying out the agenda for tonight. Now, we have quite a number of students who are joining us tonight to recognize their achievements this year as part of our superintendent's report. We have a couple of elements in that. We will recognize our student representatives who've been with us for the year. We will recognize a number of students who've invited tonight to attend from an achievement standpoint, artistic, academic, and athletic. We have a discussion about our HIB and Violence and Vandalism Report, which is a standard report that we do twice a year. And then we will have our discussion about student achievement. So those will be all elements of the superintendent's report. We will then have our one public hearing. So anybody who wants to address the board about anything that they heard in those presentations and or items on the agenda, you'll have a chance to do that. And then we'll go through the rest of our, of our business. Let me start out before we get started with our business. As we conclude this school year and begin planning the reopening of schools in September, the safety of our staff, students, and our community is our highest priority. That said, in recent days, I've been reflecting on the word safe and what it truly means. While we have been mostly using that term in light of the COVID-19 pandemic, the word takes on deeper meaning for me following the horrific and tragic death of George Floyd and countless other African-American people before him. I'm sad, I'm angry, and I'm frustrated. To the African-American members of our community, I cannot fully appreciate how deeply affected and pained you must feel by not only this most recent act, but by all acts that reflect a deep-seated bigotry in our nation's communities. However, I can and will accept the responsibility to ensure our school district reflects something different. Let me be clear. The Berkeley Heights Public Schools will not tolerate any form of racism, discrimination, or bias in any of our buildings nor at any of our school-sponsored events. We will always address areas of concern with open eyes and open hearts. Let me be equally clear that talk is cheap if we do not accept personal responsibility to do better. We must work together to assure our continued outstanding partnership with the Berkeley Heights Police Department, approach conversations with new insights, and commit to keeping everyone in our community safe. Nobody is born racist. It's learned. And if racism can be learned, it can be unlearned. More important, if racism can be learned, so can love, fairness, justice, equality, and inclusion. In their song "Teach Your Children," rock band Crosby, Stills, Nash &amp; Young tell us to be self-aware and mindful of those who are following in our path. You are on the road, must have a code that you can live by. Their words are as applicable to leaders as they are to parents or anyone else. And sadly, the underlying principles probably abuse more today than at any time in history. As leaders, we're responsible not just for charting a course, but also for establishing guardrails that serve as boundaries for our route of travel. This is inbounds. This is out of bounds. That expectation applies to everybody who's on the bus, starting with those whose hands are on the wheel. Much is being said of late about the importance of achieving and maintaining a culture that supports diversity and inclusion. And that's a good thing, as culture and school climate are vitally important to a school district's health and vitality, especially in times like these. Dr. Varley said in her note last week, "The answer lies in our core values: include, inspire, and empower." We adopted this motto early this year. They're not just words. They're the statement of what we believe in, who we are, and what we want our students to become. We have deep faith in the power of education as the foundation for a better future. We must continue educating ourselves and our children in our shared history, no matter how uncomfortable and difficult that may be. We are wholly committed to our core values to include, inspire, and empower because they echo the values at the core of America: equality, justice, and freedom for all. We recognize this is just the beginning of many difficult conversations we must have regarding racial injustice in our country. However, these conversations absolutely are necessary to create the change we seek and begin the healing process. We are on a pathway to change, and the actions we take now will be felt far beyond this moment. In the face of systemic racial injustice, brutal inequality, and senseless violence we have witnessed in the, in the U.S. against the Black community, it is clear that the status quo is not an option, and silence is not an option either. We look forward to working with our students, our staff, the superintendent, the Berkeley Heights Diversity Council, and the community at large to end racism. We all have a role to drive defining and sustainable action. Most important, we are accountable to each other and must stand united and committed and resolved to do better. And we will. We have started, but we are clearly not done. Thank you. Let's move on to, through the agenda. Can I have a motion for the approval of minutes from our May 27 meeting?
A move.
Second.
Just a second. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Those were, those minutes are now part of our official record. Donna, correspondence. Donna, you're on mute.
There's correspondence on the agenda regarding donations. We have a donation from the Grossman family for the, for the garden at the high school. And then we have three letters of donations for Friday Night Lights from the Booster Club, the PAL, and the Highlander Football Club.
Great, thanks. We will next move on to our report of the student representatives. Mike, can you promote both Alex and Emily?
Right away.
Thank you.
Hello.
Alex, welcome. Good evening. How are you tonight?
I'm fine. How about you?
Great. We are outstanding. Thanks. Give us one second as Emily is joining right now. Great. Good evening. Good evening, Emily. Thanks for joining. So first, we'll do your guys' student representative reports. Alex, why don't we start with you?
Yep. So in terms of remote learning, it's still going really well. Online AP exams also went smoothly, apart from the problems with the college board system that didn't let some test takers submit. However, an option for email submission was released in the second week of exams to counteract this problem. And apart from that, from what I've heard from students, the end of the year came much quicker than expected.
Great, thanks. Emily, we'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, so there's not much to report on sports, but most are hopeful that fall sports will continue. But as Alex said, all the students are really excited that most of the restrictions, not all of them still safe, of course, are being lifted in going into summer, so we can still have a semi-normal summer. And a lot of people are excited about that and having the rest of the year just being mostly focused on makeup work and finishing what you needed to do during remote learning. And I think it's a really good strategy to finish out the year and have people still involved.
Great. Any questions for, from our board members for our student representatives? Alex, tell us how you're thinking about the summer as you're getting ready to head on to Duke in the fall.
Yeah, so I mean, it's June, and not everything's really settled yet. There have been some updates on like when I'm moving in and whatnot, right? Everything's kind of coming together. I'm obviously really excited, especially with the warmer weather. I get to go outside, go biking every day. So it's going to remind all things.
Okay, good. And as I, as I know, our fields are open now, so hopefully our students are getting outside to exercise while socially distancing and not competing in a sport. But now all the fields are open, so I'm hopeful that both you guys and your peers and friends are hopefully getting out of the house, out of, in front of your Zoom camera, and getting out to the fields on the afternoons and the weekends. Great. And both, thank you. We're going to acknowledge you guys in a second, so stay right where you are. Dr. Varley, I'll turn it over to you for the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I know my letter this past week was a little long, so I will keep this short. We've had many momentous things happy, happening lately, and I see that change is on the horizon. I'm a huge proponent of change and of people. I cannot wait to be a part of this change and make our world, our community, and our schools a better place. On Tuesday, we held a Civil Unrest Roundtable with Chief D. Pasquale. It was very well attended with our students and staff, and the students submitted a great deal of questions with Mr., for Mr. Hopkins, our social studies supervisor. He went through all of the questions, and he organized them and folded some questions into one, as a lot of the questions were repeat. Some of our biggest thoughts, some of the biggest thoughts from the students, as this was a student roundtable, that we need to embrace our students' differences, and our students are leading the charge for change when it should be us as adults who see the need for change. I also attended a lunch and learn that was provided by the Sexuality and Gender Acceptance Club. It's very, it is very informative. I was thrilled to have been invited, and I learned a lot about some of our students. And I believe that we can all, and we can embrace all diversity. I think all the above goes back to include, inspire, and empower. It is our mission to ensure that all of our students are included in every aspect of our community. And for the next part of our report, we are going to recognize our student representatives. So I am going to rep, I'm going to recognize Alex. And I've only known Alex Janiak this year, but I think he is amazing. He always has a smile. He's always a perfect gentleman anytime we speak. And even when I give him permission to leave the board meetings, he sometimes wants to stay to see what we are, we are saying. I think Duke is lucky to have you, and I hope you'll let us know how it's going once you get there. And so now I'm going to read our resolution for Alex. Whereas Alexander Janiak is a senior at Governor Livingston High School in Berkeley Heights, New Jersey, and whereas Alexander is the Executive Board Treasurer of Student Council, the President and Captain of TSA, the Treasurer of Science Olympiad, Vice President of the Environmental Club, and is a team member of the STEM and Science League. And whereas Alexander independently engages in a self-study of computer science, including programming, algorithms, and machine learning, and whereas Alexander is a student athlete and varsity letter winner participating in winter and spring track. And whereas Alexander continues to be a member of the National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta Honor Society, Athletic Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, and whereas Alexander served with this distinction in the Governor Livingston High School Student Liaison Program to the Berkeley Heights Board of Education for both his junior and senior year, serving as liaison between the board and his peers. And now therefore be it resolved that the Berkeley Heights Board of Education hereby recognizes Alexander Janiak for his contributions to the students of Berkeley Heights Public Schools and for his service to the communities of Berkeley Heights and Mountainside. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education wishes Alexander the best of luck as he continues his education at Duke University. Thank you so much for your service to us, Alex. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Alex, have you ever been called Alexander that many times in, in thirty or forty-five seconds?
Definitely not.
Okay, just checking. Anyway, thank you, Alex. Great contribution. Good luck. Come back, visit us. Tell us, tell us how you're doing. Tell us how well we did preparing you for, for your next level. We're always interested to have our student reps come back. Emily, you get to come back again next year. I thank you again for your participation and all that you've done to support us. You know, we, we love the fact that we have student representatives here. We've had them for many years. And there's always insights that we learn, not just what you report. We try to engage you in other ways as well, not just on reporting on sports or clubs. The fact that you were here to talk to us about remote learning, something that was something we never had planned for. So we thank you for always being there and available to us. So the resolution that we have for Emily says, whereas Emily Haynes is a junior at Governor Livingston High School in Berkeley Heights, and whereas Emily is a class of 2021 student representative, an executive board member, a student ambassador, is a member of the STEM League, as well as a participant in robotics, Spanish, and photography, photography clubs. Whereas Emily volunteers at the Berkeley Heights Y assisting with and participating programs for children with special needs, whereas Emily is a student athlete and a varsity letter winner participating in cheerleading and lacrosse. Whereas Emily is a member of the National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta Honor Society, and the Science Honor Society, whereas Emily served with distinction in the Governor Livingston High School Student Liaison Program to the Board of Education for her junior year, serving as a liaison between the board and her peers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Berkeley Heights Board of Ed hereby recognizes Emily for her contributions to the students of Berkeley Heights Public Schools and for her service to the communities of Berkeley Heights and Mountainside. For the resolve that the Berkeley Heights Board of Ed wishes, and with the best of luck as she moves into her senior year at Governor Livingston, sign and seal this 11th date of June in the year 2020. So again, Emily and Alex, thank you very much. You have our thanks. You have our appreciation. We love the program that we have. You guys were stellar representatives, so we really thank you for everything that you've done to do that and really keeps us connected to the students at GL. Dr. Varley, back to you.
So now we are moving, we are now moving on to the recognition of the, oh, I'm sorry, the recognition of student achievers from Governor Livingston High School, and I will turn it over to Mr. McKinney.
Thank you very much. Please bear with me. I'm going to share my screen for this presentation for one of the best board meetings of the year.
Good evening. Welcome to our annual Board of Education Student Recognition Program. This year has been a year of firsts, and tonight is no different, as we make our presentations as in conferences. And while the format may be unique, the feelings of pride for what these students have been able to accomplish is not diminished. Tonight is truly a special occasion as we recognize the incredible talents and the extraordinary hard work of the students in our district. These students have earned their accolades for being among the best of the best at the county, state, and/or national levels. So as we begin our recognition program, I am honored to welcome you and congratulate you on behalf of Dr. Varley, Mr. Ryanstein, and the entire Board of Education, as well as all of the teachers and staff members who have watched you excel over your years as students in our district. And though we are not able to be together this evening, we are proudly united in our celebration of all that you've been able to achieve. Students, we applaud you for what you've already accomplished and can't wait to hear about all of your future successes. At this time, I will turn the program over to the Principal of Governor Livingston High School, Mr. Robert Nixon, to begin the awards of our certificates. Congratulations, students.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Robert Nixon, and I am the Principal of Governor Livingston High School. I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate all the students that are being recognized this evening. We are always extremely impressed by all of the great work that you do and have a lot of pride in seeing your successes. Tonight, I have the privilege of announcing several awards. The first awards that I will be announcing this evening are our commended students for the National Merit Scholarship Program. Their names are Bella Barbosa, Mackenzie Kalishman, Madison Collins, Tony Ho, Alexander Janiak, Gothamie Morcanat, Gopakumar, Christopher Pulos, Christopher Rampalpino, Victoria Van Reel, Danielle Yablunovsky, and Matthew Zau. Next, I will be recognizing students for achievement on both the SAT and the ACT. First, for the SAT perfect score and the evidence-based reading, we have Gothamie Morcanat, Gopakumar. For a perfect score on the SAT mathematics portion, Tony Ho, Lucas Pichinini, Christopher Pulos, Colleen Q, and Matthew Zau. And finally, for a perfect score on the ACT, Bella Barbosa and Alexander Janiak. Thank you.
This is Steve Hopkins, Supervisor of Social Studies, Word Language, and ELL, the Berkeley Heights League of Women Voters Citizenship Award. Mackenzie Pierce, the Union County Superintendent's Roundtable Outstanding Scholar, Bella Barbosa, and Matthew Zau. New Jersey Scholars Program, Desmond Lamb.
Good evening. I'm Drew Seobro, Supervisor of Mathematics and Practical Arts. I'd like to say congratulations to all our outstanding GL graduates. Tonight, we recognize some of these outstanding students for their many achievements. I would like to recognize the following students for their Union County first-place win in the Division of Consumer Affairs 2020 High School Consumer Bowl. They are Pranav Kasula, Caviar, Consula, Neely Chowder, Thomas Lynn, Christopher Rampalpino. This was the eighth straight year our GL students achieved this win. I would like to recognize the following students for their achievements in the New Jersey FBLA Future Business Leader of America events. In the Security and Investments with a fourth place in the regional and second place in state competition, Max Zau. In Journalism for a second-place win in the region and fourth place in the state competition, Sarah Hart. In Political Science for a third place in the regional competition, Pranav Consula. In Cybersecurity with a third place in the regional competition, Caitlin Donerdy. In Political Science for a first place in the regional competition, Christopher Rampalpino. Thank you, and congratulations to all our great students.
Hello. My name is James Finley, and I'm the Supervisor of Science, Art, and Computers. I'm honored to be presenting awards today in both science and art. Beginning with science, our first award goes to this robotics team for their accomplishments in the first tech challenge. These students qualified for states at the Upper Central League Tournament, the Robo Rumble. Unfortunately, they will not be able to compete at the state tournament due to the pandemic. The students are Joseph Antonucci, Jacob Troyanovsky, Benjamin Cordo, Alexander Delargy, Caitlin Donerdy, Daniel Timmerman, Mika Verma, and Olivia Ward. Our next students were recognized for their accomplishments during the New Jersey Science Olympiad, the Camden County College Regional Tournament. Richard Wedderer and Matthew Zau earned first place for their protein modeling. In art, we'll begin with the Morris Museum Fresh Perspectives Competition. This is a juried art exhibition for high school students, and it is quite exclusive. I am honored to recognize Rachel Erdrich for her drawing entitled Moira. The next group of students were chosen during the Youth Art Month competition and have a virtual exhibition going on right now. These students are Rachel Erdrich for her pen and ink work entitled Flowers, Mary Kane for her metalworking repuse entitled Untitled, and Nandita Rojesh for her digital photo entitled Fallen Soldier. Thank you and congratulations to all the students.
Good evening. I'm Lori Scott, Supervisor of Music and English. Congratulations to all our seniors who have made us so proud this year. NJMEA Region Two Ensembles, Ray Cheng Huang, Brandon Lim, Alexander Moon, Emily Shad, Catherine Zau. Columbia Scholastic Press Association Outstanding Academic Writing Story Coverage. Gothamie Morcanat, Gopakumar.
Good evening. My name is Ann Clifton. I'm the Director of Health, Physical Education, and Athletics with the Berkeley Heights School District. I'd first like to begin tonight by congratulating all of our student athletes on their tremendous accomplishments this past school year. I'd like to also honor 2019, 2020 Student Athlete Awards. Beginning with Boy Swimming at the Union County Championship Meet, the 100 Freestyle Champion and the 200 Freestyle Champion, Haran Sharafim. In Wrestling at the Union County Tournament Championship, our 145-pound champion, Harrison Kelly. Also in Wrestling at the NSIA District 16, 152-pound champion Connor Bill. Onto our Girls Indoor Track at the NSI North 2 Group 2 Sectional Meet, the 4x400-meter Champion Team, Alexander Kassu, Sophia Crescetello, Jacqueline Penna, and Victoria Van Reel. Also in Indoor Track at the NSI North 2 Group 2 Sectional Meet, Pole vault Champion Lauren Ziska. Victoria Van Reel has won the following championships. In Indoor Girls Track at the NSI North 2 Group 2 Sectional Meet, she was the 400-meter and 800-meter Champion. At the Union County Championship, she was the 800-meter Champion. Also in Indoor Track, Victoria was our NSI Group 2 800-meter Champion. And finally, in Girls Track at the NSI Meet of Champions, she was our 800-meter Champion for the fourth straight year. Congratulations to all, and we wish you all the best of luck. Thank you.
Congratulations to all our students. And now it's my honor and privilege to turn the program back over to Dr. Varley for her remarks and congratulations.
As seniors, all of you have finished your four years with amazing results, and I'm so very honored to be your superintendent. I hope you're proud of your hard work and your due diligence, and it has definitely paid off. Congratulations to all of you. Congratulations to all of you. Um, I think we will move now to the report on incidents of violence, vandalism, and substance abuse. So if, I think Chrissy's coming, as she just, there she is. All right, we'll move to that.
Hello, sorry, it kind of blanked out for a second there, sorry for the delay.
No worries.
All right. There we go. All right, bear with me a moment. All right. So I'm Christina Zahn, I'm the Anti-Bullying Coordinator. I took the position over from Kevin Mora, who helped me transition through the year, which I greatly appreciate. And this is my first board presentation in many, many years. I never thought I'd be doing it via Zoom, but here we go. So tonight, I'm really reporting on the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Reporting Requirements. And that is something that we are required to do at a public meeting two times a year, capturing the data from each reporting period. In January, we submitted the fall data via the DOE's homeroom website and are required to share the data with the public before June 30th, so that's this evening's presentation. And this presentation focuses on reporting period one, which is from September 1st of 2019 to December 31st of 2019. Reporting period two reporting happens in the fall at the October, I believe it's a November presentation. That fall presentation is much more detailed and will include the data which will run from January 1 of this year to January 30th. The self-assessment report, which is also part of tonight's presentation, again, we're required by law to present this with our school HIV grades in the fall. Mr. Moore presented in detail the results of that 2018-2019 school assessment. The DOE just officially released the grades for the 1819 school year, and that's why we are sharing them this evening. And then following this board meeting, we will post the results on the district and school websites. Okay, as far as reporting period one comparison, so again, this is September 1 to December 31st. The data includes the number of investigations that were conducted at each school as well as the number of confirmed HIV cases. The numbers are fairly consistent with the numbers in the past, with the majority of incidents occurring at the middle and high school levels. There was an uptick in investigations at MKM that consisted of parents reporting incidents on the bus and other playground and hallway type of incidents reported by students, but none of those investigations were confirmed HIVs. On a, on a positive note, there was a reduction in investigations at Columbia Middle School with the numbers more aligned to the 1718 school year. So you can see, we had seven at MKM investigations, three at Mountain Park, one at Hughes, one at William Woodrow, 14 at Columbia, and nine at Governor Livingston. And confirmed cases totaled 12 for the district, four at Governor Livingston, six at Columbia, and two at Mountain Park. And moving on to our district self-assessment scores. So over the years, we've been fairly consistent. And this, this slide includes the data for 1819, which we just received, but again, was presented at the fall meeting in more detail. As was shared during the fall presentation, the different scores that Mary Kane McMillan and Hughes had to do with training opportunities, training and opportunities for professional development for the staff, and there was also some question as to whether the suicide prevention education was part of our HIV training, which we have, that draws references to HIV, and we've confirmed that it does. So I anticipate that the scores in this area will be higher in the 1920 school year. We do not know, we have not heard yet from the Department of Ed as to whether we will be required to complete the 1920 for this school year, but we are proceeding as if we would be required, just in case. And then if we need to tweak that data, you know, take a harder look at it in the fall, we can do that. So really, our fall presentation is the bigger one, and it will include what you see here on this slide. And that's about it. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is Bill. I didn't, I didn't follow, there's some possibility that the state's not going to require the, the second period, is that what you were saying?
Self-assessment, that, so we're posting the 1819 results, but we keep asking and we haven't gotten the official answer yet. Although the memo, I believe, came out in July of last year as to the requirements for completing the school self-assessments. So we don't know what they're going to do. You know, some things they've, you know, not made a requirement, and some things we've still had to proceed with. So we're prepared to do it, we are, you know, the teams are already looking at them, but we just haven't had official word yet.
Great, thanks.
Are there any other questions from board members regarding this, regarding this topic?
No, thank you.
Okay, hearing none. Chrissy, thank you very much.
Thanks so much, everyone.
Great, thank you. Dr. Varley, you can keep going.
And now we will turn it back over to Mr. McKinney for the student achievement presentation.
Thank you very much and good evening again. As Mr. Scara is, promotes some of the principals and supervisors who will assist me in this presentation, I will begin the process of getting the screen share going.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mr. Scara, can I get confirmation that I can be heard?
Yes, sir, you can.
Thank you. I heard you, Mr. Ziobro.
So good evening, everyone. We are pleased to be here to share part two of our student achievement presentation. Tonight, we benchmark our achievement and growth against our dashboard schools. The data that we are sharing tonight is not new. It reflects the scores that we presented publicly back in October. Now, following the release of the New Jersey School Performance Reports, we construct this comparison to measure our progress towards meeting our strategic plan goals. Tonight, we will begin with the high school dashboard. This will be followed up with the more recently released state science scores for the new assessment taken for the first time last May. These scores are the first released scores, and therefore, we are not benchmarking them against our dashboard until we have time to learn how these new assessments are scored. Science assessments differ from the NJSLA and of course, assessments as they are administered in grades five, eight, and 11, and measure multiple years of instruction. Finally, we will conclude with the Columbia Middle School Dashboard before opening up the questions from the Board of Education. Joining me to present this important data is Mr. Nixon, the principal of Governor Livingston, Mr. Geiger, the principal of Columbia Middle School, Ms. Lori Scott, supervisor of language arts, music, and media specialists, Mr. Drew Ziobro, supervisor of math, FCS, business, and IA Tech, and finally, Mr. Finley, supervisor of science, computers, and art. I probably forgot some of their jobs along the way. As always, the origin of these presentations began with this central question. If we say we are a high-performing district, how do we know? Although we've been presenting student data for much longer, this is the fifth year of this format and has led to excellent, high-level conversations and a consistent focus on improving student achievement and growth, the driving force behind our strategic plan. Each year, we start with a list of our dashboard schools. These schools are among the top high schools in the state of New Jersey, and therefore, the country, and share similar demographics and expectations for their students. When I describe our dashboard to others, I consider this a list of schools that you would proud, you would be proud to send your children to. We start our presentation with the summary slide, and as you can see, it provides mixed results. Once again, as, as a reminder, this slide represents our relative performance against our dashboard schools as measured in percentiles. As we compare from top to bottom, you can see that our percentile rank stayed the same or improved in six of nine categories. As we compare from left to right, you can see that we achieved our goal of a top-third ranking in four of the nine categories, and we're really extremely close to moving two more into that top third. As we've stated in our strategic plan, it is our ultimate goal to have all nine bubbles in the top-third category all the way to the right of our chart. In the following slides, we will speak about each of these categories, some key takeaways from the data, and our action plan for continual growth and improvement. This chart reflects a three-year look at the same information and our percentile rankings and our changes. It is important to remember that our goals are lofty, and our path to attain these goals do not always move in a straight line. This chart helps to identify, identify our areas of concern, but also help us not to overreact to bumps in the road. As you can see, the NJSLA scores, as well as our SAT scores, continue to be our areas of focus as we set our goals moving forward. Mr. Ziobro will present the slides that speak to the math program in Berkeley Heights. Before he begins, I'd like to share some slide formatting that you will see throughout the presentation. In the top left-hand part of the slide, you will see an arrow that represents a comparison of our scores from this year to our score from last year, similar to what was shared in the fall. Just as a small reminder, it is possible to improve your performance year over year, but not improve your ranking. And this, this slide is actually a slide that shows that. The chart on the right-hand side of the slide contains a comparison of our percentile ranking year over year. And finally, the narrative contains descriptors and highlights from this ranking as well as some actions that are aimed at our ongoing growth and improvement. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Ziobro for his, so he can share about the math program.
Thank you, Mr. McKinney. One other important note about this slide, as we transitioned to NJSLA last spring, this slide, and we only assess ninth and 10th grade students versus assessing ninth, 10th, and 11th grade students, this slide represents all of those that took the algebra, geometry, or algebra II test. So this, this is a district-level piece versus just a GL piece. Our score showed a 6% improvement over the prior year. We are continuing to evaluate our curriculums and looking to increase student engagement and focusing on the understanding and application of key concepts. We have worked closely with Mountainside to revise and align the focus on our middle school curriculums, and this collaboration has led to several shared PD sessions, which has also led to additional opportunities for teachers to collaborate and share best practices. We continue to review all our curriculums continuously as we move forward.
Hi, this is Lori Scott, English supervisor. The slide you're looking at now is the English counterpart to the math slide you've just seen. We did see some real growth at the high school in terms of our own percentages, and we went up 18% from the previous year, which of course is a great start. We do have more improvement to make, but we're happy with that. And also, you can see, we did move up from 2019 to 2020. What we're working on this year is expanded use of zinc, which is one of our programs that helps with reading comprehension, and also work on text-dependent questions through something we're using now called CommonLit.org, really a real back-to-basics sort of approach to preparing for the test.
Did we lose Mr. Nixon?
He's on mute. Rob, you're on mute. You're muted, Mr. Nixon.
Someone? All right. Virtual glitches, I apologize. Good evening, everybody. I'm Robert Nixon, I'm the principal of Governor Livingston High School. And this slide here takes a look at the participation rates for GL students on the various college entrance exams. As we did last year, GL had a strong showing in terms of average participation rate in the various college entrance examinations. This data represents a lot of what we stand for at GL, which is encouraging students and providing them with more opportunities to be prepared for the next phase of their academic career. We counsel kids to put their best foot forward and to take the best, take the test that's best for them. While our percentage shows a slight decrease from last year, we're still proud of this result. And as we move forward, we need to take a look at the college admissions process in the wake of the global pandemic, as many colleges are waiving entrance exams requirements, some short-term, some more permanently. Moving on to our next slide. This slide takes a look at the SAT scores of Governor Livingston students in comparison. We see we had an average overall score of 1185 after enjoying a visit over 1,200 the previous year. We have continued exploring, you know, what PSAT format best supports our student preparation. Currently, all students in grades nine through 11 take the PSAT. And in addition, we continue to share resources offered to students through the likes of Khan Academy. Additionally, we're engaging in further test data analysis so that we can best support students in identifying what tests best support their goals and abilities as it relates to college admissions. We will be keeping an eye on how the SAT scores and ranking will be impacted over the next two years, as many colleges move to test optional admissions in light of the impact of the pandemic, as I mentioned. ACT scores at GL held steady at an average score of 26. We have continued to offer the pre-ACT for students at GL, with 128 of our students taking advantage of this opportunity this year, which is almost double what we've seen in the past. We think this has had a positive impact on student performance for this test. And in addition, we're continuing to support students through our SAT and SAT prep course, while we take advantage of free support opportunities like Khan Academy, which I previously mentioned, as well as the ACT Academy. Moving on to AP testing, while our overall, overall passing rate shows a slight decline from last year, it is indicative of new high standard that we've enjoyed over the past several years. Overall, 90.6% of all test takers passed at least one of their tests, which is something to be proud of, especially as we've added new courses and grown our program from one that saw only about 500 tests taken to now one that boasts about 800 tests taken each year. We found a great deal of success with AP participation as well. Supervisors and teachers have done a great job of identifying courses that our students are interested in. Students have responded positively to these opportunities, and as a result, our percentage continues to grow, and the number of tests are holding strong, even though we've seen a decrease in enrollment. What will be interesting to see moving forward is how the virtual administration of the AP tests could have an impact on student performance. At this time, we know that 307 students signed up to take an AP test for a total of 962 tests. This was in large part due to the new registration process. Of those, 854 tests were taken. Some students opted not to test due to the impact of remote learning and virtual administration of tests. These numbers represent an increase in test participation with a smaller student population to draw from. One of the things which I'm most proud of regarding our AP program is access. I mentioned the good work done to identify the proper courses in the previous slides. Part of what has been collecting data from students through surveys so that we could use that data to identify the AP courses that our students are interested in. As a result, we're proud to offer more diverse offerings that interest a wider variety of students. And moving on to athletics and extracurricular participation, student involvement continues to be a big area of strength for GL. There was a slight increase in athletic participation. There was a slight increase in athletic participation and a slight dip in extracurriculars, which I believe represents a normal fluctuation from year to year. We're proud of our students and all that they do. Participation in extracurriculars is critical when we keep the whole student in mind and support their social and emotional well-being. And then finally, GL continues to have a very high graduation rate when compared to our dashboard group. Just a couple of students from year to year can have a dramatic impact on this ranking. We have a very high percentage of those graduates go on to attend two- and four-year schools. These numbers also demonstrate that our students are well-prepared for life after high school, as a high percentage of our students are still enrolled in colleges and universities well into their second year post-high school.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. This slide is an update and look at our outcomes as a follow-up from our presentation last year when we identified some of our action plans. I'm sure that it's difficult to read in this format, so just a brief summary of what it contains. As Mr. Ziobro mentioned, much of our work in mathematics has been on targeting instruction and improving teacher practice through collaborative professional development. This has led to highly successful work on best practices and curriculum development with Mountainside so that our students arrive at GL with the same content and foundational skills as they move to high-level math courses. In language arts, we have made good progress in improving curriculum and instruction utilizing available data points. Additionally, the implementation of progress monitoring and tracking has led to better outcomes and scores for many of our students. Our science team has begun the deep dive into the recently available science assessment data, and this will serve to inform our teaching staff members and improve the delivery of instruction. Our teachers have also embraced the opportunities to develop shared assessments that will support student problem-solving skills. And finally, we continue to streamline our guidance services to ensure that we're providing the best counseling available with regards to college entrance exams and the college application process. These updates will be critical to our families as we navigate these uncertain times. I will now turn the program over to Mr. Finley, who will share information regarding the newly created State Assessment Program in Science.
Hello, I'm James Finley. Thank you for having me this evening. I'll be introducing you to the NJSLA Science Assessment and sharing the eighth grade and 11th grade scores from the 2018-2019 school year. The NJSLA Science Assessment is designed around the three-dimensional learning framework that guides the next-gen science standards. And as Mr. McKinney shared earlier, it replaces the NJ Biology Competency Exam. That's now, and these assessments are now administered in grades five, eight, and 11. Unlike its predecessors, this assessment is far more rigorous and requires students to apply all grade-level standards across biology, chemistry, physics, environmental, and earth science. Students are expected to demonstrate their learning in new and complex ways through various technologically enhanced items. And the results that I'll be speaking to tonight are the first and will serve as a baseline. These results were, as Mr. McKinney had said at the beginning, these results were received later than expected and arrived just before the school closures. Nonetheless, we've been busy digging into the data. The new science assessment is scored using four levels. Levels three and four represent grade-level and advanced-level understanding. Additional data is available to districts to analyze on content area domains and scientific practices. Due to Governor Livingston, 42% of our students met levels three and four. But to provide context, statewide, 50% of students earned a Level 1 classification. And only 27% of students statewide fell in levels three and four. This is a starting point. We're happy to see that we far exceed the state, but certainly there's room for growth. So as initial steps, we'll be looking specifically how we can support special education students in science and look at how our progression might be impacting our performance. Remember, these students are in 11th grade testing in biology, which they haven't seen since ninth grade. Additionally, environmental science isn't even offered until 12th grade, but they're being tested on it in 11th grade. At the middle school, 55% of our students met levels three and four. Once again, to provide context, statewide, 36% of New Jersey students scored Level 1, and less than 20% of students met levels three and four on the assessment. So given that, we're quite happy with our 55%, but certainly we have more work to do. Our initial steps include expanding our use of the Open Saiad curriculum, which we've been piloting with the State Department for two years now, furthering our collaboration with Mountainside, and continue our participation on state-level committees.
Thank you, Mr. Finley. As we transition to the CMS scores, we'll follow a similar format for our presentation. Again, our dashboard schools represent middle school programs that feed into the high schools that we just compared ourselves with. These schools have a variety of grade-level structures, but all of the schools have similar demographic, and again, high expectations for their students. While not quite as impressive as last year, where every category was in the top-right box, we remained in the top-third in five of the eight categories measured. As we discussed in the fall and have been working on all year, our current seventh-grade students have been identified as a cohort of students who need some additional support in both math and language arts. The middle school team will share some additional details about what took place this year and how we continue to support these students in the upcoming school year. Again, this is a three-year review of our percentile ranks. It is important to remember that this graph does not indicate passing rates, but rather our performance in relation to other top-performing schools. That said, this chart clearly demonstrates the need to better support the sixth-grade cohort, our current seventh graders, so that they are better prepared for success in eighth grade and in our high school. Ms. Scott will share some of the more detailed results and action plans that we have put in place to support our students in the language arts.
So this is the sixth-grade cohort that is currently in seventh grade that Mr. McKinney spoke of. And what you can see is they've been on our radar, and we've been working with them. And I can talk about what we're doing with this year's sixth graders, as well as what we're doing with this cohort as seventh graders. This year's sixth graders are, again, we're kind of going with this back-to-basics like we did with some of the high school, and we're piloting Grammar 101, which is, again, grammar instruction, although a lot more fun than the sort of instruction we had when we were their age. As seventh graders, this cohort is involved with a lot of personalization of their instruction, a lot of programs that allow for targeting by the students, a lot of electronic practice, because that's the test-taking format. And more science and history in the texts that we're using with these students as seventh graders now to prepare for the exam. Last year's seventh grade did fairly well, again, in the 70th percentile there. And with them, because they were seeing success as eighth graders, we are doing a lot of literary analysis, which what we've found with our current eighth grade, these seventh graders, that they're ready for that. So we're trying to do more to prepare them for what they'll be doing at the high school, because they have done well. And you'll see that that is also true of the eighth grade when we move on to that next slide. Again, this is eighth grade from last year, but as you see, they've continued to do very well with an 88% passing rate. So again, based on the results from 1819 during this year with our eighth graders, we moved on to more complex tasks as they've been doing well throughout the last couple of years.
Okay, so we're going to move on now to Math 6. And again, this is that cohort that we've been tracking for a couple of years now. We have offered targeted interventions for students and provided customized practice for these students to try to increase their skills. We worked with the sixth-grade team to look for ways to help students in all areas by providing students with the opportunity to learn skills that can help them across the board. This year, we continue to work with this group of seventh graders to increase the accessibility of the seventh-grade curriculum for these students. We're examining all the sources of data that we have, and looking forward, we will be focusing on critical Algebra I skills for these students. So in seventh grade, we continue to leverage math space to provide customized instruction and to help identify areas of focus. This has allowed our teachers to target students' needs and focus work on building the skills that they most need. In grade seven, we also use connected math to target the needed skills by adapting the activities in the curriculum to focus on the needs of the students. Just a reminder about this slide and the next one, the seventh and eighth grade data on these slides are combined results of the tests. So this seventh-grade slide shows students taking the seventh-grade assessment, Algebra I, and some geometry. Now for the eighth grade. In the eighth grade, we are seeing results of the program changes from previous years, which has allowed for the increase in the number of eighth-grade students taking Algebra I. Our eighth graders took higher-level assessments while still passing at higher rates. We are seeing the benefits of supporting our students with EP math. Again, this slide is grade-level cohort, not by test. We continue to work with the teachers, examining the data on problems and individual students to identify the successful interventions and supports for students. And that's the end of the math slides, and I believe it's Mr. Geiger next.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. The student growth percentiles in ELA slide. Considering that we have identified concerns that we spoke of earlier, the overall SGP at the middle school in English and Language Arts, which is a whole-school score, has shown resilience from last year to this year. Next slide, please. So unlike in ELA, the SGP in math does not represent the whole school. So here we see the scores of just sixth grade and most of seventh. We do have seventh graders in algebra, so they are not represented here. And even though we are still ranking with typical growth, this is frankly not what we wanted to see. While our focus was and continues to be to correct this group, it has already been shared that this is an identified cohort, and they will continue rather to receive targeted support. Historically, individual growth in middle school continues through the three years, from sixth to eighth, and many times it is significant. I am hopeful that our plans will have that muted impact when we take a look at this again next year. So this shows a minor decrease in participation. We know that interest in sports does fluctuate from grade to grade. We have an awful lot of sixth graders this year, for example, who were chomping at the bit to participate in sports, but, sorry, you have to wait a year, so I anticipate these numbers will be up a little bit next year, if all things go according to plan. And the loss of students in sports this year actually represents about half of the loss overall in student participation. And even though very robust, I think it's worth sharing that prior to going remote, we had already begun conversations with advisors and teachers about their clubs to see if those changing interests in students might make a change for clubs next year. And that's a conversation I'll be having with the district administration during this summer.
So as we...
I'm sorry?
Did I cut you off, Mr. Geiger?
No, I'm fine.
As we look to what we've accomplished this year, again, in summary, we were able to make positive progress in the development of literacy skills, including close reading and emphasis on grammar. We also collaborated on the identification of newer, more engaging reading options aimed at promoting reading through the middle school levels. To date, we have launched a revised sixth-grade math curriculum and are completing the work on a grade-seven math curriculum to be launched in the fall that is in collaboration with our Mountainside partners. As Mr. Ziobro shared, the curriculum was additionally supported by consistent and ongoing professional development that was well-received by all the attendees. Our science teachers continue to be active participants in the development of statewide science curriculum units and have worked to build assessments that incorporate key scientific practices. The advisory period at the middle school continues to evolve and present opportunities to integrate social-emotional learning on a regular basis for all students. This established practice will support the launch of our SEL frameworks in the fall. And finally, our new electives are nearing completion, and Mr. Geiger did share with me that all the newly adopted courses have generated student interest and will run as part of the 2020-2021 school year. So looking forward, with all this information that we have, what are some of our actions and plans to continue our growth and progress towards accomplishing our strategic planned goals? We will continue the process of program review, as well as curriculum development and alignment with Mountainside in math. Additionally, we are refining student assessment strategies to more effectively foster a growth mindset among all students in all levels of our math courses. Literacy remains a critical piece for improving, and we know that that's critical to everything that we do and improving student outcomes. And we will continue to personalize our instruction to meet individual needs of our students using all of the available data points. We're also working to promote reading and writing across the curriculum, particularly in the analysis of informational text materials in science and the social studies. Next September, we will launch our social-emotional learning frameworks in an intentional effort to foster positive, safe, and inclusive schools that allow for all students to learn to the best of their abilities. And finally, the district supervisors are working to create an eight-to-12 academy program that will engage our older students and hopefully keep more of our students at home as opposed to attending private or magnet programs. And with that, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Reinstein and the Board of Education for questions.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Frank, Laurie, Drew, James, Rob, et cetera. Questions from board members?
Doug, I have a question. It's Jerry.
Go ahead, Jerry.
So, well, first, the statement, I think it's great that you're working closer with Mountainside. I think this is something that we've been trying to do for many, many years. And I applaud both our staff and Mountainside for doing that. Just at some point, I don't know, are you going to talk a little bit more about your social-emotional programs and the academy? Like, give us a little more information on that. I don't know if this is the time to do that, or maybe at a future meeting. So I'd just like to hear a little bit more about those.
Sure, I think that those are probably worthy of presentations moving forward to share some of the things that we're launching at all the different grade levels. It is a quake. The social-emotional learning frameworks were built in conjunction with Dr. Janoska and her team in the Guidance Department. They did an exceptional job. And we are preparing to, you know, support that through professional development next year and launch that so that all of our teachers can integrate social-emotional learning in all of our classrooms. We realize that it really is a shared responsibility. We can't just, you know, expect this to be a guidance counselor issue. We all need to play a role in making sure that our students are in the best climate possible to learn. And then the academy is in the drawing board stages with the supervisors, and we probably can expect something probably towards the middle of next year to provide the board with some direction as to what they've discovered and what they think the best program would be for our students.
And just one last question, I'm sorry. So as we, you know, consider returning to brick-and-mortar instruction, whenever that's going to be, a lot of the conversations has been about regression of students and, you know, how much they've actually learned during remote learning. I know we've done a fantastic job with that, but it is not the same as a face-to-face instruction. So I'm wondering, you know, to speak about tonight, some plans that I know you've all been, I'm sure you've all been working on, to kind of bring the students up to where they should, would maybe normally would have been if this had been a typical year and we'd have had instruction within the schools.
Sure, we are in the preliminary stages, but I can share that our supervisors' group for the 612 classrooms and our elementary principals have coordinated and collaborated on a PDP, which is the Teacher's Individual Professional Development Plan. And we... And we are creating a framework so that all of our teachers are collecting baseline data, identifying those gaps and spending the beginning of the year to find out, you know, before we know where we're going to go, we need to find out where we're starting. So we will make a concerted and organized intentional effort to start the year with that. And we've started those discussions. We have work to do over the summer to prepare for our hopeful return in September.
Very good. Thank you.
Questions from other board members?
This is Chris Riley. How long do you think you'll be focused on that gap assessment in September? I mean, assuming we're back in school, you know, in the classroom in September, how long do you think that gap assessment period will last?
I think we'll, you know, from a data collection standpoint, that'll be a priority as we return in September and October. As far as filling in those gaps, you know, my optimistic side believes it will make great progress next year, but it's probably a two-year. I don't want to call it recovery, but, you know, to catch us all and get us back to where we typically are, it might take two years for our students.
Wow, thank you.
Questions from other board members?
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm glad to hear Mr. McKinney say that, you know, that we're, we're in our minds that we're thinking about a multi-year response because, you know, missing this amount of school is, and I, and I understand that the kids have been in, in school, but, but it's not the same and, and missing this amount of school, I think, is, is really going to be significant and we, and, and layered on so many levels, you know, they, you know, the kids that have, you know, taken biology now, they're going to be in AP Biology at a different point, the kids that are in fifth grade math, the kids that are in second grade, you know, we're going to, we're going to see this ripple through on a number of fronts and, and, and I'm, I'm really glad to hear that you're, you're being realistic about that.
I don't, I, I just also like to add that, you know, one of the things, you know, we are going to have to do our own, you know, data collection because as everybody knows, is we lost all of our assessments, not all of them, most of our assessments this spring. So, you know, over the summer, we're not going to receive, you know, a kind of a benchmark of where we are. So we're going to have to do that ourselves. Now, we're, and we're prepared and we're, you know, we're more than able to do that, but we're not going to have those outside data points that we've traditionally had for, you know, to support that as we look at each student individually.
Great. Other questions from board members?
Just to follow up, it's Mike, just to follow up from that question, Scott. Any thoughts about voluntary self-assessment? So since you lost some of the data point to say, hey, here's an assessment, if you want to do it voluntarily, that way you provide data to the district, you know, as a thought?
The only, we're not there yet, you know, as far as having those tools. But I will say that some of our current tools that we are using does provide us that information, even if they're doing work over the summer. For example, you know, the one you've heard probably the most about is math space with some of their activities. And, you know, we incorporate that as summer work for those students and at, at some levels, not at all levels, not certainly in our youngest elementary students. But that will provide us some data points, you know, and some things that teachers will have access to that information as students walk in the door. But we don't, we, to your point, we don't have a complete plan on what that assessment would look like at this point. But it's a, it's a really good question and something that, you know, we'll probably be spending some of our time in the summer, you know, sharing. And how do we, how do we create, what, you know, what do we want to measure and how are we going to measure that?
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Mr. McKinney Howe or Mr. Nixon, maybe, how do you feel that the AP classes, courses were impacted, the exams were impacted this year? Do you have a quick sort of update? How you feel that went?
I, I, I'll give it a short one before I turn over to Mr. Nixon. I, you know, I think what the college board did to provide, you know, opportunity and equity for students across the country is focus their, the test, the online test on what should have taken place prior to leaving for remote learning. So that, you know, the tested material was fall into winter and didn't include units that should have been taken in the spring. So from, from one point of view, that created that equity and fairness across the board. The other side, there's a lot of other sides, the change in test format as well as, you know, assessing something that happened in October provides different challenges. But I'll turn it up. Mr. Nixon probably has greater insight on this than I do.
Sure. And I think I would say that I have cautious optimism with, you know, how, how I think our students fared on this. Our teachers worked very hard to make sure that our students were ready, and they also did a great job after the fact of collecting feedback, collecting data, surveying students to see what their AP experience was in terms of the test. And while a lot of the students share that they had a great amount of, you know, concern heading into the administration of the exams, a lot of them ended up with feedback saying, you know, that, that wasn't as bad as I thought, you know, the, the, you know, the, the information that they had to share and the, you know, the preparation they felt very comfortable with. It was the awkward test administration in a new way that they've never done before that, that made it challenging. But I know our teachers utilized a variety of resources that was made available to them by the college board to try and let our students practice and be as prepared as possible. And aside from some technical glitches, which like Alex mentioned earlier, college board did work to resolve moving into week number two. I, I think the majority of what I heard was a lot of, you know, positive feedback, and I'm excited that, you know, 852 students, 854 students ended up, or not 854 students, 854 tests ended up being taken, which is, which is a high watermark for us, you know, even with a good amount of students opting to not take the test because of, you know, the situation. So I'm, I'm really excited to see, to see what our results are.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Okay, thanks again to our administrative team. Thank you. If you guys will stick around for the question session if we need you. Dr. Varley, does that conclude your report?
I do want to, just so everyone is aware, we have, I met with Mark Swartz, who is the superintendent of Madison School District. And he has a similar district as we do with a feeder district, Harding Township feeds into Madison High School. And we are going to partner as district teams to plan our reopening plan and so that we will address all those items you so eloquently brought up, such as how are we going to assess? How are we going to remediate? And I think we both just asked if we could get to, get to the end of this school year before we started planning for next school year. And we know that Governor Murphy has said that he's going to give some guidelines on June 15th on how we can reopen. And so we're, we're just trying to make it through this school year, and then we'll start planning for next as soon as we possibly can.
Great, thank you.
And that's it for the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. Liaison reports. Have any board members have liaison reports?
Okay, I'll just say that in terms of negotiations, the, the BOE and the BHEA have, you know, come to agreement and, and expect to have an NOA on the next agenda with respect to negotiations for the custodians, maintenance and transportation workers. And, and that is likely to be a four-year contract as well, following suit in the BHAA and the BHEA teachers.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Any other liaison reports?
I do. The Environmental Commission through the New Jersey Tree Recovering Campaign distributed, got a thousand trees to distribute within the community. They distributed 700 plus at Columbia Middle School on Saturday morning. And the trees that are left, some of them will go to our fourth graders for the Arbor Day celebration, and the balance will be going to Halls, who will be giving the trees out free from their location. New Jersey School Board is compiling best practices for virtual learning. Both the delegates assembly and the workshop in October will be held virtually. Now, those of us that have been to the October program, there's 3,000 people. I'm sure that's going to be quite an undertaking with all that they do offer. And also, school leader has an awards program, and this year, they're going to showcase remote learning. Berkeley Heights nailed it, and hopefully we can get, you know, someone to do the application to apply for that award. You know, I think we did an excellent job and certainly deserve that recognition. And for Ed Services, they are moving forward with their summer programs, but they will continue with the virtual programs. And Terry Sopert, who is the superintendent, tended her intention to retire August 31st. She has really moved the commission in a lot of positive direction. But it's time for her to step, and she can't divide herself between the commission and her family anymore and feels she hasn't been able to vote, to devote her full efforts to the commission like she should. So she will be leaving us August 31st. That's my report.
Great, thank you, Helen. Any other reports tonight? Great, thank you. Donna, facilities report?
We have been focusing our efforts on increasing the airflow in the schools. We have stepped up our efforts to repair and replace the rooftop fans. Both our maintenance staff and a vendor have been repairing and replacing the fans. We've made significant progress. There are some areas where the replacement project is larger than our own staff can handle. And tonight, we're approving a contract to replace two fans at the middle school. We're also approving two contract, or contract tonight for paving, which was one of our summer projects. So to do some paving repairs, the scope of the project has been reduced. And also floor tile replacement, which was another project that was in our budget that we're moving forward with. That's it.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Donna on facilities? Okay, moving on to the preliminary citizens here, and this is a time where anybody from the public who has a question or a comment can be heard. If you'll use the raise your hand functionality, we will recognize you. Mike will unmute you and we'll go there. The first person I see is Liz Kane.
Coming on now.
Liz, good evening.
Hi, how are you? Hi, I just wanted to say one thing quickly in regards to the liaison report, talking to you as, as the president of the BHF. We usually have representatives, but our meeting that we had recently over Zoom conflicted with an award ceremony at GL, so our representatives were unable to account, to come. So we are doing a program right now of honors, which used to be our old tributes program to raise some money since we didn't have the basketball game and other things. But what we voted on in our last meeting that I just want to make sure that the board knows about is that we voted to modify our gifts and grants slightly for next year to have the schedule be a little bit more fluid instead, so that we can react quickly if there are things and needs that are needed within the district. And specifically to help with any pandemic-related expenses that may be coming up. So if there's something that we need to trial or help out with, we would love for the Board of Ed or Dr. Varley to reach out to us and try to work with us in that respect.
Liz, thank you very much. Thank you. Thrilled to hear that you'll be flexible with us. I think flexibility will be the operative word next year when we get back. So we, we thank you for your continued partnership, and I am quite sure we will take you up on your flexibility for next year. So thanks again.
Sure.
The next person I see is Emily Ramos.
Promoted now.
Emily, good evening. Welcome.
Thanks. So my name's Emily, and I'm the parent of a third grader at Hughes, a kindergartner at Mary Kay, and a three-year-old who has yet to enter the school system. But I appreciate the messaging to the parents that we've received from school leadership, including Doug Reinstein, regarding the recent acts of racism, including the deaths of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and Ahmaud Arbery. We agree that the silence, that silence on this front is not an option. So with that being said, are there plans for the teachers or principals in the elementary schools to talk directly to the students about the current local and national efforts for racial, racial justice and equality? I know my third grader is eager to hear messages of unity regarding the recent, in the context of these recent events, directly from her teacher, somebody who she admires and trusts. I'm also asking these questions on behalf of Ramya Kassari, who has work commitments tonight. She's a parent in Berkeley Heights, and she can't be here. But she's a parent of two racially mixed students and has concerns about the challenges her children will face due to the color of their skin. She's worried that there have been no, there's been no communication directly to the students. And I want to read her words specifically. She says, "While I understand that this is a tough subject made more difficult because of remote learning, I do think it's important to speak directly with the students about it soon. Otherwise, how will our children, especially our Black children, understand that they are being supported? Parents are doing their best to talk with their kids, and our town is showing great support as well, the march, et cetera. However, they have not heard anything from their teachers or their principals. I wouldn't want that silence to send an unintended message." Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Varley?
So we, so last week, we did have the counselors all did reach out. From six through 12, they reached out to the students directly. K to five, we don't email students. Mary Kay McMillan doesn't even have the access to email. I have gone back and forth with several parents on this, and it's, it's definitely something we are having a discussion about as far as the principals. I, I wouldn't have my, I'm not sure that I would put my teachers in the position to have a very sensitive conversation unless they felt very comfortable doing it. It, it is something that I'm, I'm considering. I have gone, I've been on email, and I have multiple meetings in the next few days regarding this subject. So it's not like it is going in one ear and out the other, just trying to find the best way to handle it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next person I see is James Bryant.
I just, before, before we move on from that, so I just want to make sure I understand. So, so the, the, the guidance counselors for, for the older kids have, have, have reached out and, and at least through email and directly communicated with, with the students. It's the, the younger kids that we've, we've been, you know, a little more nuanced about, and we're trying to figure out what the, what the right level of touch is. Is that, is that fair?
So what we had is our, our school counselors, K to five, emailed the parents asking if the students' children were having difficulty with, with, with the race relations, with the pandemic, with any, any aspect, they could reach out to the counselor, and the counselor would set up a Zoom meeting with the child individually. But we emailed the counselor would set up a Zoom meeting with the child individually. But we emailed the parents on that as opposed to the children, K to five. The six through 12, the students were emailed directly by, by both principals as well as the counselors.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
The next person I see is James Bryant.
Incoming now.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can. Welcome.
Hi, sorry about that. This is James Ellen Creama Bryant. We have three children in the public school system, one in CMS, one in MKM, and one in, in, oh gosh.
Mary Kay McMillan.
Well, whatever, she's in third grade, Woodruff. And we have one three-year-old. And I just want to echo the comment. And I did have some email exchange with the principals too. The silence was from a Black parent of students in the school. The silence was offensive. And I say that because in this age of technology, there are so few instances where we actually have this moment of impact, where we can actually pick up a phone and have a connection. And I've had that connection with many principals. And I just feel like we missed an opportunity here to reach out directly to the parents of Black students because there are so few, to have that personal connection and ask, how are you and your family doing? How can we help? How can we help you know that we're here to support you? I think that was a missed opportunity that I'm hoping we can get better at next time.
Thank you very much for your feedback.
Thanks for the feedback.
I see Liz Kane has a second comment. Liz, you're welcome to come back. Maybe she just forgot to take her hand down. Hold on, Liz, you're unmuted.
Sorry, I'm here. Yeah, so this is a different, as I'm coming to you as a parent, someone with a middle schooler and a high schooler, so not in respect to any positions I've had in all the different organizations. But as a parent in town, I've had many discussions with my children about the events in the news lately, as you would imagine. And I'm asking on what's being done and what you're working on in regards to educational experience, educational materials and experiences that maybe reflect more of the other races that make up this country. Are we doing some work and evaluating some of the materials we have in the schools and maybe some other programs? I don't know how assemblies are going to look going in the future, or something like that, that basically show and help educate the rest of the, the whole student body in the Berkeley Heights Public School System on all the different races and how they've affected the building of this country. So specifically how you're, may adapt or change how we educate the youngest of our children, specifically at Mary Kay McMillan and the elementary schools. I've seen firsthand how the middle school and the high school are able to have very open discussions and are able to do a lot more with history and things like that. But I think some changes and some other materials and things should come about on how to help educate the students at Mary Kay in the elementary schools.
So I can't, you know, one of the things I think we're going to have to take a deep dive into is our curriculum, K to five, and really look at how we address culture, community, you know, race, religion, as much as you can address religion in a public school district. But I do think we're going to have to take, take a deep dive and see where we need to make changes and be more inclusive. It is, I, since I've gotten here, I have talked about being inclusive. And so it's, it's on, it's definitely on my radar. We, I have, I have a few meetings tomorrow, and I am working on some diversity training for the staff as well as the students. And so, you know, it's all, it's all in the works. It just takes a little while to get everything off the ground and implemented, but I am committed to having it done.
And maybe readdressing, obviously not for this summer, but having more summer reading from different perspectives and different voices than the same old staples that have been happening over the years.
And we did, we are, I did receive that feedback from a parent about the lack of diverse authors in our reading list. And we are right now going back and revisiting that. And I did receive an email today about some books that we are considering. One thing we have is that the English teachers have to read the book first before the students can read it. So we're trying to find books that they've already read because summer's right around the corner.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, thanks. The next person I see is Susan Pogue.
She's coming on.
Our video. Hi, I'm going to excuse myself. I have not showered yet today. It's been a very busy day. So this is as good as it gets. So I want to address, you know, social justice education a little bit. And I think part of the problem is what we call like the week of respect. I will tell you in my classroom, social justice lives 180 days. And there's something from a book called Starting Small, and what we don't talk about hurts us all. And if my six and seven-year-olds can have hard discussions about race and gender bias and age bias and weight bias and size bias, anyone can. It's just a matter of having these discussions and being open and validating what people are thinking. And one thing that I've learned in my years, and I did do two years of Holocaust studies at King University, I analyze every picture book that comes into my classroom. And some of the picture books that I used to love reading to my own children, I started looking at them for bias, for hidden biases. I'm like, oh, no, I can't read this one anymore. So I think as educators, we have to keep learning and keep being open and just keep analyzing and understanding that we all have bias. And the bias sits there and it simmers. And then all of a sudden it comes out. And you're like, oh, where did that come from? And just understanding where your bias is so you can deal with it and, and move forward. And it's not a question, it's just a comment.
Great, Susan, thank you. I do not see any other people wanting to be recognized. I'll pause a second to make sure that that's the case. Okay, seeing nobody else there, I'll close the preliminary citizens hearing, and we'll continue to move on to the rest of the board's business. I have a motion for the administration items.
So moved. Second.
Motion a second. Any discussion on administration? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
So can all board members go off of mute so we can do this?
Sorry, yes.
Mr. DiQuila?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Chris Ino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstain?
Yes. 15, Education. So moved.
Second.
Motion a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. DiQuila?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Chris Ino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstain?
Yes. 16, Personnel.
I move 16, I don't have the agenda from A through O.
Correct.
Second.
Motion a second. Any discussion on personnel? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. DiQuila?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Chris Ino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstain?
Yes. 17, Business?
Yes, I'll move 17, A through Z.
A second.
Motion a second. Any discussion? I'll note here that we have the donations from the Howland Booster Club, the Football Boosters, and the PAEL for our Friday Night Lights game on Friday, October 16. We have a very generous donation from the Grossman family to add to the Isadora Cybert Memorial Garden. And a donation for t-shirts were bought for the silver, by the Silver Linings Foundation for all the GL seniors, which will have a GL Senior 2020 logo and all 274 names on the back of that, courtesy of the Silver Linings Foundation. So all of them, we thank them for their donations. Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. DiQuila?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Chris Ino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstain?
Yes. 18, Finance.
What about 17, Business?
I just moved that, Helen.
That was, we just did that one.
Okay. Finance, I move finance items, A through D. I had reviewed those, everything was fine.
Second.
Motion a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. DiQuila?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Cassano?
Yes.
Dr. Chris Ino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstain?
Yes. Is there any other business to come before the board?
I do have a, I do have a question or an ask, a request of the Personnel Committee. You know, I think as we, you know, take a hard look at ourselves to work through some of the issues Dr. Varley has been talking about relating to bias, I do think that, you know, one of the ways we can help our children is to put strong role models at the front of the classroom with our teachers. And I think our teachers need to, you know, over time, reflect the diversity, the growing diversity in Berkeley Heights. So, and if you guys already have this on your, on your to-do list, that's great. But I do think it's important for us to look at our hiring practices in terms of where our outreach efforts are, where we're getting applications from in terms of our new teachers coming into the, into the district, to, to attempt to make sure that, you know, we're, we're getting, we're optimizing candidates that are non-white.
Absolutely. I had every intention this year. Montclair State University has an education diversity, diversity education job fair. And it was in April. And obviously, we didn't do, we didn't go anywhere in April. So it is definitely something that is on my radar and trying to, trying to diversify our staff as much.
I also, Melissa, I also, Dr. Varley, I also think we have a real potential opportunity with Teachers College of Columbia University. You know, there, we're working very closely with them next year. And I think that's a, a natural place for us to do some outreach, maybe get some help from them.
Absolutely. I agree with you 100%.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Chris. Any other, other business from the board members? I'll just conclude with, with one comment. I actually turned my camera down for a second. As most of you know, I have spent parts of my opening statements talking about our community and everything that we've done since we've been in remote learning, all the volunteerism, the fundraising activities, the work that our students have done to support our businesses, the work our teachers have done to visit students. And one of those efforts was that the GL community sold these t-shirts called Howling to Strong, which you can now see that I am wearing. I don't typically wear a t-shirt to board meetings. But I did choose to, by design, wear this tonight. And although I didn't speak about it in my opening statement because I thought it was more important to talk about the topic that I did, there continues to be great work that goes on in our community as it relates to supporting our businesses, or relates to supporting our seniors, all the work that's gone on to support our teachers, to support our students. And although clearly in the last couple of weeks, there's been other topics that have been, have been come top of mind, as, as you heard tonight with some of the people who spoke to the board, I don't want to end this meeting without talking about all the great work that Berkeley Heights has done as, as a community and continues to do as a community. I know many of you, if not all of you, have heard what the governor's messages has been around, we are starting to open up a little bit more with restaurants opening outside on, on Monday, fields being open, non-essential retail being open. So as we begin to turn the corner with this, there is still a lot of work to be done socially distanced. But our community continues to be strong. Our school community continues to be even stronger. We're winding down to the last several days of the school year. But I did not want to end tonight without acknowledging all the work that all the organizations have done to make Berkeley Heights just truly a great town. With that, I will adjourn this meeting. We are adjourning to an executive session to discuss central office salaries, and we will not be coming back. We will return at, on June 30th for our next meeting. With that, thank you very much. Thanks for joining tonight, and we will see you shortly.